I am going to call the special meeting of the LSC to order. The next item on the, oh no. Okay. Thank you, Nick. Uh, let's see. Okay, yeah, Sarah's unable to turn on her camera, but she is with us. Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is roll call. When I call your name, please, state your name and function on the board. Principal Gibson.
Kimberly Gibson, Principal Laheiri Tame.
Cindy?
Cindy Watola, Parent Rep.
Nick?
Nicole Zitrep.
Kate?
Kate Kuzensky, Parent Rep.
Sarah?
Sarah Ogatow, Parent Rep.
Mac?
Mac LeBoon, Community Rep.
Okay, and my name is Tina Holder King. I'm Parent Rep. I believe that was all the, let me just make sure no other members have joined. Okay, looks like we're all set. Okay, excuse me. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, oh, I'm sorry, did someone say something? Okay. Are you, are we voting or have questions? We're voting? Okay, all in favor, all in favor, raise your hand, please. Okay. Looks unanimous. Okay, the next item is approval of minutes. I do not believe we have any minutes for approval. Someone please speak up if that is incorrect. Our last meeting was just a few weeks ago, and so we will handle those minutes at the next regular meeting. Okay, we'll move on to item number five on the agenda, which is the LSC Candidate Forum update. And just, nothing to vote on here as we voted on the date last meeting, and that candidate forum will be held the 23rd of March. It is virtual. It will be at 6:30. Principal Gibson, did you have anything to add with that?
Um, no.
Oh, okay. And so candidates are welcome to participate in the virtual forum, and we'll have three minutes to make any statements that they would like. There will not be any question or in question answer session or anything like that. It is not required. And again, that will be held virtually. Kate, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I think I saw that from what was posted, that there are not enough parent candidates for the open positions. So my question is, are we able to let people continue to apply? Because I had heard that there were some people that missed the deadline. Are we able to accept those, given that there are still open positions, or is that not allowed? Because I think the challenge that we have had in filling positions that were open during the cycle has been, it's challenge, it's a big challenge. And so I feel like anything we could do to get those parent rep spots filled prior to them vote would be great.
Yeah, I, I agree wholeheartedly. I actually reached out to the Office of LSC Relations and the, the deadline to accept candidates could not be extended. So the options are to go through the typical process of filling those vacancies, just like if someone had left, which is, you know, the asking for people to submit their name, and then the LSC votes to fill those positions. Now, one clarification that I do need to get is whether that has to wait until the July organizational meeting at the earliest, or if it's something that this council can do. So I'm waiting clarification on that, because, because of course, if that's the case, then we could move forward to fill those positions now. But again, I need clarification on that, and we'll get back to the council on that at the next meeting. Any other questions? Okay, the next item on the agenda are committee updates. I believe, Sarah, is there anything that you would like to share regarding committees?
I hope you all can hear me okay. So I just wanted to quickly remind folks that we do have our Equity Committee meeting happening tomorrow at 6:30, and that information on how to access that meeting, Tina, is, I believe there is a link on the website, but it will also send a reminder to the board tomorrow. Just to put that on folks radar, and we will be convening then for that, for, for the Equity Committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Cindy, did you have any updates that you'd like to share?
Yeah, we got a few things underway with the committee, a couple, starting a couple of weeks ago. We're working on the first thing is trying to figure out how to change the phone system in the school, so it doesn't say Agassi any longer. I'm just working in that direction. Also, working on some projects to bring more families to the school. So we're working on a one-page document, just sort of like an informational flyer that can be sitting in the office and also to have for parents when they do the school tours, starting next month. And also working on broadening our social media presence. So a few irons in the fire that we're working on. Our next meeting is tomorrow afternoon at 1:30. And, okay, that's it.
Thank you, Cindy. And just want to, we did receive some emails through the LSE email of parents, families wanting to get engaged in the committees, and so I'm really thankful of that and encourage everyone to continue to reach out. The description of the committees are on the website, as well as the person chairing that committee. And so I just want to encourage everyone to check that out and to get involved.
When we're thinking of that, we never really solidified in the committees, the Engagement and Communication Committee's email. And we thought of something, so emails are getting filtered, and I'm receiving those, and I'm reaching out to those parents that have contacted me. But we don't have our own email address yet. Is that something we might want to do tomorrow at our meeting and see if it checks out through Gmail, or do you?
Sure. No, just go ahead and set that email up, just if you could communicate it, if I'm, if I'm unable to attend the meeting tomorrow. If it's in the afternoon, yeah, I won't be able to attend. But, um, yeah, just, just go ahead and get that set up, and we'll make sure it gets added to the website and under the information, and we'll start communicating that.
Okay, right, thanks.
Thank you. Let's see, any other, any questions about committees or anything going on? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is the principal evaluation process. And ahead of this meeting, I asked the members to kind of refresh your memories and take a look at the processes outlined in our training materials and the LSC Reference Guide. And so what I've done is just put together kind of like a one-pager based on that information and a proposed process as well that can be the the starting point of conversation on how we do the process. Nick, can you present that, please? Thank you. And I can, I can forward this to the board as well after this meeting. Okay, oh, I gotta make it a lot bigger so I can read it, hang on. Okay, all right. So just some background. Again, this, this information I'm going to share is based on the Local School Council Resource Guide. It's Part Five in particular, which is for principal evaluation. So I just encourage not only our council, but our community as well to, it's, it's available online CPS site. If you would like to familiarize yourself with the process. So just in general, there's two parts to the principal evaluation. So there's a professional practice, which is completed in the spring. And then there's a student growth and other measures, which is completed in the fall, but it pertains to the previous school year, if that makes sense. This is one thing that can be so confusing about this. So as an example, like we'll complete the professional practice for the, this spring for the 2021-22 school year. Then in the fall, the current, the seated LSC will complete the student growth and other measures portion of evaluation for the 2021-22 school year. So the, the finishing in the fall looks back to the, to complete the previous year. So again, what we're doing in a couple of months or next month is a professional practice. Again, it's done annually in the spring. It needs to be finalized by May 1st. And then there's also an optional feedback session that the principal can take advantage of, does not have to. And that is held during the month of May. And then any updates to the score finalized on May 1 that come out of the feedback session have to be entered in the system by May 30th, so have to be completed by then. What the council will do is complete a professional practice form, which is on page 208 of the Reference Guide that I, of the LSC Reference Guide. And basically, it has the five competencies, and then there are 28 key behaviors under those competencies, which align with how principals and school progress is ranked, I should say, is, is measured by CPS and by the board. So all of those key behaviors align with how our principal and our school progress is assessed beyond the council. Thank you. And so this is the process that I am proposing. So we're in March now, so what I'm proposing for this month, one, we establish a LSC Principal Evaluation Committee. And that committee uses what's called Appendix G, Principal Performance Evaluation Support Materials. And so I'm proposing that we determine with the principal what support materials we would like to be provided as part of consideration for our evaluate, for this professional practice evaluation. I will forward Appendix G to the board, even though you, you have access. It's, like I said, it's in the guide. But what Appendix G has is, under each competency that's part of that form that we will fill out, there are examples of documentation that can be considered for this evaluation. And so I propose that any evaluation committee work with the council and the principal to identify pieces of support material that are considerate of the privacy, of course, would have to be considered when we determine those support materials. Also, we want to be cognizant of the volume versus the expected completion of our evaluation. And so also for March, I would ask that, I'm proposing that the LSC and the LSC committees really amplify completion of the My Choice, My Voice, I think I said that right, school survey. I believe the staff survey has been sent, has been received already. Is that correct, Nick?
Yes, the staff received, it opened about a month ago. And I don't have the exact date of when it closed. It's either just closed, or it's closing soon for staff.
Okay, and would you happen to know when, when it's sent to families? I don't recall seeing it yet.
I think it's April 1st.
April 1st?
Yeah, and I have the month of April too, or at least maybe April 23rd, if I recall.
Okay, thank you. So I, I think the LSC should put a lot of effort behind amplifying that survey to get as much staff and family participation as possible. And so we can, we can discuss the ways to do that at the next meeting, but I know there had been some ideas, I believe, Sarah and or Cindy and Lori, some ideas about being present at different times in the building to allow parents who come in to go ahead and complete that survey on the spot. And so that, that would be the activity I'm proposing for March. For April, I would propose that the, well, we are required to complete the preliminary ratings for the behaviors and competencies that I mentioned, and, which is on the professional practice form. And that score that has to be in Piot, the system where the evaluation is recorded by May 1. I'm not going to take this meeting to go through the form. I will follow up with that information to the council after this meeting. We've all now, I think most of us have seen it before and are familiar with it, but no need to go through all of that here. For May, I am proposing that we conduct a feedback session if Principal Gibson desires. It is at her discretion, and then we will finalize the professional practice score. And then also, oh wait, I think I missed something here. Let me see here.
I think it's point two in April.
Yeah, let's see, yeah, I did, okay. Yeah, point two in April. Thank you, Sarah. I am proposing that the evaluation committee during the month of April, drive formulation of applicable survey questions to be distributed to our community. Now, for reasons that I'll get into later, these surveys would not be part of Principal Gibson's evaluation, but would be a tool for her to obtain feedback. And two, also a tool for use in determining other the measures for, you know, other measures for her subsequent evaluation. And I'm proposing that the evaluation committee do that in April, because they will have to be cleared by legal. And so then in May, I am proposing that those surveys be distributed during the month of May. Can you go up a little bit, Nick, please? Thank you. And so then in October through November of 2022, this fall, it will be time to complete the final evaluation, which includes the student growth and other measures for, for this school year, and the results will have to be in Piot by November 30th. Now, I also put on here for October and November of this year, for the principal and LSC to define performance expectations for the 2022-2023 evaluation, including recording of any agreed-upon optional additional indicators by November 1st. Per the process, any additional indicators for evaluation have to be recorded, agreed upon and recorded by the principal and LSC by November 1st. So anything additional surveys, things like that, that we wanted to consider for this spring evaluation, we should have finalized by November 1st. And so I'm suggesting that with the surveys that can still be done as feedback, they be used to identify potential areas of growth, areas of focus, and, and so that they can be settled upon for the upcoming evaluation. Any questions, discussion? Cindy?
Will it be one survey that goes out to the entire school community, or will there be a separate survey for parents and a separate survey for teachers and staff?
You know, that, that would be up to the evaluation committee to kind of assess that need. I would just off the top of my head, I would think that it would be, you know, multiple surveys. I know the staff has done surveys before, and I believe are working on another survey now. And so, you know, it's not a one-size-fits-all kind of situation. I think, you know, it, it will be something that has to be discussed, you know, at, at depth and agreed upon, so that the so that the questions provide actionable feedback or, or actionable resolution for, for areas of growth, you know. And so I think it's something, and I, and I think Lori's not here right now, but I know she has been calling principal evaluation surveys that I think have been used at other schools, and so that, that's definitely a resource to look at how it's been done at other schools. Any other questions? Nick?
Yeah, so again, back to the surveys, I know in the past, we have always distributed them prior to giving the whatever it's called, sorry, the preliminary scores, because we use them to guide our, our thinking and to get feedback from everyone. I'm a little confused as to the purpose of doing them afterwards, if we're already doing the My Voice, My Choice survey, which everyone takes. And we'll be getting those in the summer. And I know there's the November 1st thing. I don't in the past, we've never considered surveying the community and the teachers as an additional indicator. So I know, and I know, correct me if I'm wrong, Mac, when we did this a few years ago, like you know, the survey went out to a community, survey went out to parents, survey went out to teachers. All of the LSC members received the comments, were able to really dive into depth into the feedback to guide, to guide our communal rating. Again, I'm confused why we would even do them if it's not for this principal evaluation, since we're gonna get, you know, my, where's my choice? We get that, but we don't get it usually until early summer at best, if not late summer.
Yeah, I guess, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I, I really would value, you know, when I'm looking at the different competencies, you know, and I think we talk about this every year, you know. As a teacher, I can, you know, and a teacher representative on the council, I can really assess, you know, competencies A's and B's, what's happening internally. But when it comes to like competency D, empowers and motivates families in the community. You know, other than talking to some parents and the parents on the council, I would want more information to accurately assess that. And I think that's always how we've done it in the past.
Let's see, well, a couple of things, since surveys may have been used like that before I got on the council, but I don't recall receiving any since, you know, since I've been on the council. And as far as you know, I, I think surveys are a a valuable tool. However, I think it has to be fair. And per the process, surveys and things are supposed to be agreed upon in November, so that there's the opportunity to make sure performance is targeted to those specific areas. As far as the, you know, why do the survey? And so that's why I'm saying, you know, that's something that has to be divided, decided in November, because that is the process that CPS has outlined, and I think we should stick to that process. It's just that that's, that's the requirement outlined, and I think we are held to that requirement for a reason. As far as why do the surveys, in a, even if we don't, even if we have the other, the CPS survey, I think it's still valuable feedback, because that's, that's the, that's the goal, right? Feedback. And so I think it's still valuable feedback. And also I think it will give the opportunity to really target those questions to our specific school, our specific administration, our specific priorities. And so with that information, then you go into the fall with clear aligned goals, priorities, expectations, and all of those. So that, that's why I think it's still valuable to do that. And, and, you know, to also address your point about, you know, you have the teacher's perspective, and then there, there's the parent perspective and things. That's one reason why I really want to have an evaluation committee to take that Appendix G, because listed in it are different pieces of supporting information that can be used to, to support a ranking in a, in a specific competency that may be outside of what your function is on the board. Any other questions? Sarah, does he have a hand raised?
Getting to Nick's comment, so Jen, and as a point of clarity, what I'm hearing is, is that the evaluation committee will move forward in putting together a survey, correct?
That is correct.
That will be disseminated to families this term? And that that information will be used to guide to guide the process, but not necessarily determine the score. Is that is correct?
I'm not sure what you mean by guide the process.
Or guide the review for the, for the individual making that assessment.
Not for this professional practice survey. I mean, not for this professional practice evaluation. It will be this, this spring more a professional tool, a feedback tool for the administration. Now, going into the fall, when the indicators for the next evaluation have to be established by November 1st, what I'm suggesting is those surveys and where priorities seem to shake out, where strengths seem to shake out, where opportunities for improvement seem to shake out, those should be used as the principal and the LSC determine what additional indicators they want to put in place by November 1st, so that when it gets to the spring of 2023, and you're back at the professional practice evaluation, then that information that, those indicators that were decided upon based on feedback, based on discussion, will come into play then.
Okay, so that sounds really familiar to me, because I do remember in previous conversations with the, you know, being on the former LSC with the former administration. You know, we, we did have conversations about using that data to guide on form, individual assessments on for the evaluation. But the decision was to do what you had to outline, Tina, with reference to taking that information and using that for professional practice for leadership. And, and, but it sounds like what would be different in the fall would be to be able to use that actual data collected to inform the process.
Exactly.
So just, thank you for that point of clarity, and just recognizing that this, that I, I do remember conversations in the past about how this process would look, and so there's some familiarity there.
Yeah, I, I remember being here as well, because the, the surveys did, having surveys did come up. And at that time, after going through the information, I pointed out at that time as well, that, you know, if we were gonna do surveys, we should have decided that. But we were obligated to have those indicators recorded by November. Let's see, Kate, and then Cindy.
Sorry, I just wanted a couple of things. I completely understand the whole process that we're describing. I think it's really important that we get the surveys together so that next year we're set up in the kind of the right way we should be. I have to say it's frustrating, because I feel like the last LSC with the last administration had not done surveys for so many years that I feel like we got out of the cycle of doing them. It wasn't part of what the, what LSC did every year, and I think there was a lack of kind of more objective data or kind of surveys of the whole community to kind of feel like we knew what was going on. And I feel like when we And I feel like when we did the last evaluation of the last administration, we were a little bit flying blind, like Nick was saying, that you only knew the part you knew, and it was hard to assess on other measures. And I feel like we're in the same position again today. And so I'm happy that we're gonna be fixing that for the next LSC. But just bringing up, is there any way to solicit feedback prior to this evaluation process? Because I just feel like some, even if we're, we can't do a survey, because it's not a time, but is there a way to somehow solicit feedback in a way that would go along with the rules so that we could have a little bit more information as we move forward? I just, I think a lot of us, especially those of us who are not in the school that much anymore, just because of all the COVID restrictions, I feel like beyond these meetings and kind of just talking to people, I, I really feel disconnected from the process and from kind of, I don't have the pulse on the school that I feel like I used to have. And so I think anything that we could do to try to get a little bit more information would be helpful.
Thank you, Kate. You know, I, I, I understand the frustration, believe me. But again, I would point to the part of the process where we have an evaluation committee that looks at that appendix G and goes through those possible support materials that speak to what we're rating her on, speak to the competencies, speak to the key behaviors. And so I think that, that will be the avenue this time. That will be the avenue that we have to get that additional feedback, because I want to make sure without, without the agreement that should have been obtained as far as additional indicators back in November. Without that, then I am just, I don't think it's fair to go outside of that. But I do still want our parents to be able to provide feedback and for that feedback to be considered moving forward, for sure. But as far as the evaluation process, I think we need to be within the confines of that.
Specifically, there is no avenue for parents to give feedback or for teachers to give feedback in any way, shape, or form before we do the evaluation. Not, not saying a survey, but other, there's no other avenue of
As far as for consideration for the evaluation?
No.
No, because we have not established that. Cindy and then Nick.
Kate, you pretty much read my mind, but I'm just looking at the, the dates that we have set up. And I know that we just have, the scores that go into Piat are preliminary scores. So we are having a feedback session. Would that feedback session be open to sort of more general feedback from the school community and not just kind of going through those competencies and getting, collecting evidence in terms of driving, because I don't think we're, we're not really putting in final scores until the fall, correct?
Well, we're putting in a final professional practice score. That's what I mean by final. So the professional practice score, the, the final score has to be in by May 1. And then there is an optional feedback session now. And if, if things change coming out of that feedback session, then that changed score has to be in by May 31st.
Right.
About that.
Right.
But yeah, so the, the feedback session is optional. So the, and then at that, after that, that will be the score for professional practice. In the fall, you do the student growth score.
What is our intention with this feedback session? What is that supposed to accomplish then?
That is an opportunity for the principal to, to hear feedback and to, to discuss with the council just the perceptions of things that, that affected what score was given and just an opportunity to have that exchange, to discuss. There's no, there's no document that has to come out of it or, or anything like that. It's just an opportunity to have discussion around the scores, what supported the scores that we're giving, things like that.
And that will be closed session, obviously, because the scores, the general community is not privy to those scores. I, I mean, I just didn't, I feel like we're flying blind as well. You know, I don't think we're getting the full scope of what this evaluation is supposed to entail. And I know that we just can't, because we just haven't had enough time. We have a new principal. But I'm just wondering, as Kate has expressed, is there any way to gather a little more feedback in the broader sense from the broader community? That's just, just wondering if there's any way to do that between now and that feedback session.
Again, I would say, as far as principal evaluation goes, the instructions are very clear. And I think, to be fair, we hold to those instructions.
Okay, okay.
But again, I, I, I think the feedback, I wanna be clear as well, the feedback is important from the community. So I think we should still get that feedback. It should, it should drive things going forward. This is the first year of evaluation, so it should drive things going forward and set things up at, by November 1st every year to have those, to agree upon those opportunities, you know, and, and have them, have them, have them considered. And what I'm proposing is the, the, the best way I could think of to adhere to the process and provide opportunity for input on, on, on giving the principal feedback. And for, for those 28 key behaviors, there are, so each of those key behaviors are aligned to what's in the principal report. So just there for starters, the, as an LSC member, the, the principal reports and just other things that, you know, we've, we know to have been going on in the building, our guidance. But then, of course, the appendix G, we could look through those and identify other things to help inform. And, and also, I think with the different functions on the board, like I, for me in the past, I do lean into the teacher representatives for that portion, because I'm not in the classroom. So there are certain things that on the, on the evaluation in the past, you know, I've, I've not put a score for, because I don't know. And, you know, I don't wanna inflate or take it down. So in the way the scores are done, you know, just leaving it blank, you know, is, you know, if, if it's something that I'm not familiar with, you know. Uh, Nick?
Thank you, Tina. I hate to sound like a broken record, I know already. I think Cindy and Kate have expressed frustration. And I do wanna clarify, I don't think surveys have no point. I do think there's a lot of value in the survey. And I think when I said that, my first comment was because of frustration. I, I do feel like we have three jobs on the LSC, C I W P budget and principal evaluation. And this is now the second year in a row where we've kind of botched it. We are kind of flying blind. You know, this November deadline shouldn't have come to a surprise. I guess that's on all of us. I, I just think it's kind of a cop out. And also, for a first year principal, not the best way to start things. Obviously, you know, we'll know, I am gonna ask all our parent representatives who will be on next year's LSC, since I think we all know the results of the parent representative election. You know, let's keep this in mind, let's really get the ball rolling in the fall. We now know there's this November deadline. You know, this could have been done in the fall. We spent so much time together in meetings. I think this could have been done in a, in a productive way, and we could have done this thoroughly. I, I'm just worried it's not gonna be thorough. But I guess we'll know for next year. I also wanna just clarify, as individual people, we can get feedback informally, right? If, you know, so I will say, if parents wanna talk to me, by all means, talk to me. And the same thing, if you would like teachers to reach out to you, just let me know, just let them know. I think, you know, there is open communication. Obviously, it's not a, a formal process, but I think, I really do think it's important that everyone gets to hear from each other in the, in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Sarah?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to, you know, it, it is, it is tough to not have all of what you need to have to make an informed decision and just echo my, what's been shared. And so just, you know, moving, just thinking about going into the process itself, you know, how, how, I don't know, I think I, I think I said this, maybe during this time we were in the midst of this, that it, it definitely does limit, right? What, what, what we, how we can bring, what we can bring into the assessment. But, you know, I look, I appreciate what Nick shared about just recognizing where and how we can do better. So, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, there, that, oh, somebody.
All right, I was just gonna say that I think it is important, like Nick was saying, that like if parents or teachers or anyone wanna reach out to anyone in the LSC to have a conversation with us informally about feedback, since we don't have other avenues, I think everyone on the LSC would be open to conversations, email, talking, whatever, because I think we really are trying to do the best we can with what we have.
And, you know, I, I can't, I can't help but speak to a comment that you made, Nick. I don't think this is a cop out. I, I do not agree with that. I, I do agree that, you know, we all got the same training, we all, you know, read the same materials. And, and yeah, we should have been thinking about this at the beginning of the year. But I, I don't think it's a cop out, it's the process. And I'm going to be fair and stick to the process as I did with the previous administration. So, um, I think it's a, it's a great idea to solicit feedback as, as we have throughout the course of the year, extended the LSC email for anyone who wants to provide whatever feedback. And so, yeah, I do definitely encourage that. And when we perform this evaluation, there will be discussion around why we feel the way we do, why we score the way we do, that's part of the process. And so I think that coupled with still doing the surveys, while it seems the frustration is to, to not be able to incorporate that in the evaluation process, I do still think there's value with obtaining the feedback and getting it to Principal Gibson, so that it can inform her practice as well as the evaluation practice going forward. So I, I, I don't think it's a cop out, I think it's the best of a situation with a very, with a school year with a lot on everyone's plate, to put it like that. So. Any other questions or anything? Okay, since we have a committee updates on the agenda, I would like to go ahead and establish a evaluation committee that will take that appendix G and review the additional support materials that can be requested in order to add to the material considered for evaluation. Is there anyone who would like to volunteer to be on that committee? Okay, I see Nick and Cindy and Mac. Okay. And I'm going to volunteer as well. So Nick, Cindy, Mac, and myself. Okay, I'm going to make a motion that an evaluation commit, an LSC evaluation committee be established to determine, to facilitate determination of evaluation support materials. Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion or questions? Those in favor of establishing the evaluation committee? Oh, I'm sorry, Principal Gibson without a question?
Yes, there was a member who was on the LSC who had to get off due to emergency. Is that person still able to join the evaluation committee?
Oh, that's, I would, I would think so. You know, okay. I will confirm, but I, I, I don't think she has to be here to vote to be on the committee. So I, I think so, but I will confirm, I'll write the name down, but I will confirm. I don't think it's an issue, though.
I, I think, for, oh, sorry, Mac, go ahead.
No, 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 I was just gonna say, maybe we could propose that this person joins the committee, assuming they want to do so, like we could vote on something that, you know, recognizes they're not here now, but if they choose to accept, they'll be able to participate.
And I just wanted to clarify, Tina, was your motion to establish the committee? Or did you specifically say which members were on it?
I was just establishing, we don't have to vote on who the members are. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're just voting to establish the committee. And then as far as members, I think, you know, we can ask Sharice, when she's available, if she wants to join. I think that's no problem. Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Kate, did you vote?
Who?
Kate, did you vote?
Mm-hmm, yeah, she did. It appears unanimous on my end, Cindy, did you? Are you good? Okay. Okay, so for the members of that committee, I have Cindy, Nick, Mac, myself, and Sharice. Is there someone who would like to volunteer to head that committee? Going once, going twice? Okay, I'll volunteer. So I will reach out with the information, the appendix G information. Let's see. The next item on the agenda is LSC vote on transfer requests from internal accounts. Principal Gibson?
Good evening, everyone. I had the opportunity to work with Mr. Hall and Ms. Perulis, who are both on this call to review our internal accounts this week. There is funds that have been left on account for several years, such as class money. And I would like to motion to work with the internal CPS internal accounts to create book transfers, so this money can be used for school and student supplies and incentives that the teachers submit for their amount of money on the lines. I think you're muted.
Thank you. Is there a second before we discuss?
Wait, what's the motion?
Principal Gibson?
The motion is to be able to work with internal accounts, CPS internal accounts, to create book transfers. For example, for like the class money, I submitted this to Tina, and I worked with Nicholas and Frida on it, so that money can be transferred to a bucket line where it can be spent to use on student supplies, money collected this year and money that's already been on the line before the new budget comes out.
Got it. No, I was asking, like, are we motioning to approve the proposal or to discuss it? I didn't.
The motion is to approve and then we'll have discussion.
Got it, okay.
No, no problem. So I'll second the motion. Okay, discussion, questions?
What's the dollar amount we're discussing? You said there's some internal accounts funds. Do we have a sense of how much is in there?
Um, we could share the dollar amount at the next meeting. We have to do what's called an audit with the internal accounts people to see how long the money been sitting there. But once we have permission to create the book transfers, we can transfer and make sure that money is spent, uh, for students, school supplies. Some of it is combining money for like the art program. We have like art supplies and art program line to put it all on one line. So the various teachers can spend the money as it is, um, allocated to be spent.
Thank you.
So, so with this motion being for the transfer. So that it's a, yeah, so that, uh, supplies and incentives can be, can be, um, purchased with the money. Will we see that transfer before any purchase, purchases are made? Is that how it will work, or are you proposing one?
So, um, I shared with you guys for the last couple of months, internal accounts, there's money with like thirty cents or thirty dollars. Or some classrooms have one twenty. For the class money, it needs to be transferred to one line. But then every teacher, when we're making the purchase orders, they will purchase the amount for their classroom that they are allocated. And then those teachers, when the materials come, it'll come in that teacher's name, because the notes will say that. At our next meeting, which will be very close to budget time, we will share out all of the expenditures. From the book transfers.
Okay, thank you, Principal Gibson. Uh, Sarah, then Cindy.
Um, so it sounds like we're, uh, looking to streamline the budget, if, if that, if I can say it that way. Um, looking to kind of condense line items, if you will. Um, and so I'm assuming then the budget will look a little different. As it relates to how we'll see it, uh, on the line items, we won't see as many. Um, and then just to point a clarity, the, it, it, the money's being funneled into school supplies. Is the anticipation that this would help to offset costs for families with school supplies at the beginning of the school year? Or is this solely to help with school supplies in the classroom? This is a little bit more, uh, clarity around, um, that school supply line item more particularly. Thank you.
Yes, so the line that will be created, like for the class money, I'll give an example. That'll be purchased per the teacher for the class that they have this current school year. This will not be the, um, the money for school supplies purchased for the future year. There is a line, but we will request that once we have a total amount, and we're still trying to attain money, uh, school fees from families. Um, we will discuss that at the next meeting, at April meeting.
And is this money we have to spend down by this year? Is any of it, can it be carryover?
Um, some of it can, some of it has been sitting for over three years. That's why I asked permission, um, at the L S E meeting. To create book transfers alongside CPS internal accounts. So they will be helping us because they can determine how long the money sat on the line. For example, we have money from room two oh three, uh, sitting on the line that's been sitting there since twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen. And so I would need the support of CPS internal accounts, because we don't have documentation at the school level. So this is for money that has already been collected, that's been here prior to July first. As well as money that was collected for like school fees for this year in September and October, classroom school fees.
Uh, Cindy, and then Lori?
That pretty much answered my question, be, uh, because I know sometimes funding is time sensitive and won't roll over. Um, obviously, these were put on, put in line items that were not time sensitive, so maybe that was intentional at some point. What is the decision making going? I mean, is this, is the move towards doing the, the book transfer to kind of a new bucket? Or a new line item, is that something that's the most general kind of line you could put it on? So it can be spent however, or is it really truly for school supplies?
It has to be spent of how the line is created. So some of them have to be spent. Um, if it says for library books, for example, from Foley Library, then a librarian will purchase library books. And he would be the person responsible. So I did share a document with Tina, but we can ask that it be shared with the council. I did sit and do the document with two staff members. So they helped support like which teachers would trans, you know, be spending the money from this, uh, book transfer.
Yeah, because you want the money to be, you know, well spent, but you also want it to be, in the broadest case, so you can use it. Not be just narrowed into just library books or just one thing. You have to find that balance, like where to put it. So I'm sure that's what you guys are doing right now with.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Lori?
Uh, that was just kind of my question, and it, it was also kind of answered. So this is. These were just in general accounts. If this isn't like this was money that was sitting in blank account. And now we're shoveling, we're shuffling it into the teacher's accounts. This sounds like when you're saying it was line items. This was teacher accounts, classroom accounts, that just was never spent, was left unattended for many years. And now you want to be able to use it in the kind of use it or lose it kind of feeling. Okay.
Yeah, we want, we want the teachers to be able to use it, but some of the lines are a classroom money supplies. But some have specific uses like the, the Foley Foundation, those are to purchase specifically books. So to use it as it's supposed to be spent. And to condense it as Sarah shared, like to condense it. We have like a five page internal account. And it can be condensed if some of the money is combined, like athletic fee and athletic sports. If it's all under one thing, it's easier for like Mr. Only to spend that amount, how, how it is designated.
I think it would be helpful, maybe just thinking in the future, is that if it's all staff looking at it? If there is, I thought we had an L S E budget committee. That maybe in the future, like when we're talking about those things, and I understand, like Nicholas, you're on the L S E, but having a non-staff member. Just being a part of those conversations would probably feel good. Just throwing that out there.
Thank you, Lori. Uh, Nick?
I just wanted to clarify, um, as, uh, Principal Gibson said, um, Frida and I have been working with her and, um. AP Moore on this. Um, there's like several things we're talking about, and it can get, you know, pretty confusing. So one is, as Sarah said, consolidating line for, you know, all the council members, you've seen the internal accounts. And there's like a whole bunch of internal account lines with no money in it, and some with random amounts. So it really is just kind of cleaning up shop. Um, as, um, Kimberly said, you know, we have like. Six different lines that have to do with athletics and seven different lines that have to do with fine arts. So just number one, consolidating those. Um, and then looking at, you know, okay, this money has been sitting in the room two oh three account for five years. Let's make sure that teacher can spend it on supplies for their room, you know, before the end of the year. Um, and anything in internal accounts does roll over. And then it can't be spent until it is moved to, um, a budget line. And when, um, Ms. Gordon, our clerk, or, um, Ms. Gibson does it, um, you can only move it to a specific line. So, and just so everyone knows, you know, if I want to buy textbooks, that money has to be moved. And there's a special code that goes just with textbooks, and that's the only thing you can buy with that. Um, so there is, um. You know, that kind of safeguard, um, but you're not just going to spend money on, on anything you want. Um, so it really is, we're, we're hoping, um, for all future, um, internal account reports, it'll make it much easier to understand and read. Um, and to know where the money is going to, obviously, because that has been an issue in the past or a question in the past.
Any other questions? Any, any additional discussion on the motion? Okay, the motion is on the floor for Ms., uh, for Principal Gibson to work with CPS internal accounts. To create book transfers, to, um, align, uh, money to be spent. On, uh, supplies and student incentives based on the, um, indication. Already determined for the money in the, uh, accounts. Uh, please, those in favor, use your icon to vote. Okay, um. Any oppose? I don't think so. I think we're all unanimous. Lori, I'm sorry, did you? Yeah, Sarah, I did see Sarah's vote. Lori, did I, did I see you vote? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Okay, motion passes unanimously. All right, that brings us to public participation. Nick, do we have anyone sign up?
I just did one last check and no, there is no one signed up for tonight.
Okay, and I don't think anyone asked in the chat. Okay, no. Okay. The next item on the agenda is action item and action items and next steps. Um, Cindy, did you want to take a stab at it or? Only had one. Um, you're on mute if you're talking, Cindy. I can't see you.
Yep, I was muted away. Okay, um, if we look at this, we are creating in a, a principal evaluation committee. Correct?
Yes, so that's been created.
Okay.
But I have the action item to, to follow up with the appendix G. Committee with the appendix G information, so that we can, um, identify the additional support materials we want to request.
Okay, I have that too. Okay. I think that looks like that was it then.
Okay, all right. Um, the next meeting date is our April regular meeting, which is at six P M. Um, Wednesday, six P M, virtual. Um, also just again, another reminder about the, uh, candidate forum. Um, there will be additional communication about that as we get closer. And to let everyone know if there are candidates who are going to participate in that. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? No, all in favor, please raise your hand. Um, it is unanimous. This meeting is adjourned at seven oh seven. Thank you, everyone, for attending this, uh, unplanned special meeting. Have a good evening. Bye-bye.
Thank you.